One. Okay, it's two oh one, everyone is present, so I'm going to call this meeting to order. We do have a quorum, all five members present. I have a really brief chairman's report. I think I mentioned to you the last meeting that I was going to attend a world expo on Living Green while I was in the Netherlands, which I did, and I was hoping I could come back with some information that might help our district. The majority of it though is on growing plants and using amounts of water that we don't have available to us. I was hoping there would be a little bit more on sustainable energy, but the Netherlands is focused on wind and solar, which is the things that we're looking at already, a couple of interesting things where they did have a building that was, the siding was made out of solar panels that would tilt upwards towards the sun and uncover their windows. I thought that was an interesting thing, but one thing that I think you might want to look at, and I can send anyone the link if they want to, is they had a way of using every single thing that might have been a waste product. Trash from plat- you know, plastics, trash from food products, all kinds of things to be able to create building materials. They had siding made out of fungus and vegetable waste, all, all kinds of things, and I thought it was kind of interesting, so I can send the link out if anybody wants to see that. Other than that, it was mostly things that require a lot of water that we don't have, so I'm sorry, I don't have quite as much to share with you as I was hoping I would. Anyway, so moving on to ad hoc committee reports, does anyone have any ad hoc committee reports? No, okay. Committee member communications, is there anything that you would like to make an announcement, report briefly on your activities, or ask any questions for clarification? Nope, don't see any hands. Okay, public comments, and this is a special meeting, is on agenda items only. We have only, let's see. We have my husband, we have another director, we have Ms. Bentonhausen, and we have Megan, so do any of you have any pub- any comment on any of the agenda items? Okay, Dr. Bentonhausen, go ahead and speak.
Very much, Madam Chair. I did not expect to speak right immediately, I forgot this was a special meeting, and the rubrics of special meetings always confuse the daylights out of me, so I thought I would speak right before this agenda item, which is the, as you can guess, the D cell item that comes later in your agenda. So let, would you like me to put together in my head quickly what I wanted to say that I was getting ready, or do you want to wait until the item comes up?
Why don't you wait until the item comes up, if you don't mind?
Thank you very much, I will do exactly that.
Thank you. See. Okay. Okay, can, uh, next is item to the consent agenda. Consideration to approve the August eighth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting minutes, does anybody have any corrections or changes to the minutes from August eighth, I believe they're in your agenda packet? Nope, okay, it's gonna be a quick meeting. Would someone like to make a motion to accept the minutes as written?
Yeah, I'll move that they be accepted as written.
Okay, and anyone want the second to motion?
Well, second.
Uh, that was Michael, okay. I'm gonna do a roll call vote. David?
Hi.
Michael? Brad? Couldn't hear you, but I can see your mouth.
Hi.
Okay, Stephen? Jim?
Hi.
Okay, the vote is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda for regular business is three A, and this is discuss and consider the updated resources and infrastructure ad hoc committee roster and approve or revise as needed. You kind of have two copies of the ad hoc committees here, one of them is a redline version with some notes that were provided by our board secretary, but think it'll probably be less complicated if I go with the other copy without the redline, if that's all right with everybody. I'm just start with the district's asset management program, and this was an ad hoc committee that was formulated in October thirteenth of of two thousand twenty with Brad and Stephen, and this was put on hold until the asset data was updated into Tyler in code. Um, I believe that Mr. D'Enzo had some comments about how he keeps track of the assets already, so I'm not sure whether or not we still need to work on this particular ad hoc committee or not, so Ray, can you give us some input on this?
Yes, hi. Yeah, we could, we could keep, uh, keep this ad hoc committee open, uh, we, we do have some ideas that we, we can pitch to the ad hoc committee sometime soon here, so.
Okay, great, and this ad hoc committee is comprised of Brad and Stephen, so you guys are prepared to continue on with Ray?
Yeah, so we don't need to keep track of just Ray's assets, but the fire departments and the, uh, and the other departments also, so whatever we come up with, even if, even if the utilities has a different plan than the other, than the general fund, I don't care about that, but, but we need to keep track of all the assets, not just utility assets.
Yes, that's true. And probably working with Ray, we're mainly dealing with the utilities department assets, so I see the general manager is on here. John? Where are we with the general fund assets? Are you available?
Yeah, I don't think we've done much with that, that program yet. I know it's, um, it's in the plan, but we're still involved with the, uh, you know, the new finance manager taking over and some of those new duties.
Okay, so is the R and I committee members the people who would be most, most useful in working on the general fund ad hoc, I mean, assets, once that gets going?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, so do we, um, let me ask the committee members, um, do you want to form a separate ad hoc committee to work on the general fund assets, uh, separate from the infrastructure assets? Um, Michael, you had your hand up.
Yeah, yeah, my, my question is on the scope, and as, as it's written, uh, to create a an inventory of assets, so that first to me, you know, make the count, make the list at this one point in time. And that's, that, um, I would think that would be, would be more useful is, uh, a make sure there's a process in place that once we have a valid inventory of the assets that that, uh, we won't have to do that again, that there will be, uh, process in place such that you know, at any point in time, you push a button and you know what we have.
Good point. Point, okay. Does, does this particular ad hoc committee, um, that we have right now for the infrastructure assets want to work on the general fund assets too, when that is ready to be worked on, or shall we form a separate ad hoc committee? I don't know how much work, um, this particular ad hoc committee wants to take on.
Yeah. The, I think we talked about this when we had the fire marshal on it at one point as well, so it did look like his list was really long, but if it's not going to be in the same accounting process, it might, who was to split it up a little bit?
Okay. So why don't we go ahead and have, um, Michael, since you've got real organizational skills here? Would you like to, um, I, I think, I think, uh, what you said is correct, we need to figure out how to go about creating an asset list. So perhaps we should do that first. Um, so do you want to work, Ray's is something you can help us with?
Uh, it's too early to tell, I'm not, but it's too early to tell.
Okay. Okay.
I wanted to say more, but I really can't, so.
Okay. Why don't we just, um, put this one on hold until we figure out exactly what is expected of us, does that work?
Okay.
We'll put this on hold for now and get a little more background information on what exactly what was expected of us, because I believe this was a strategic plan, um, assignment. Okay, um, we have a joint resources and infrastructure finance ad hoc committee, I think we this was David and I, and we were supposed to be prioriting, prioritizing the projects in both the SST and otherwise groups and continuing with pursuing grant opportunities. I think we kind of put the prioritizing the projects in the SST and otherwise until we got the package put through, and we're still working on funding for the SST, so any input on this particular ad hoc committee? No? David, you're on this with me, what do you think?
I, I thought we had prioritized the, obviously the SST is done, but the, the other ones, I think Ray has got a good handle on that now.
Okay.
So I don't think we need to do anything at this point, we may wanna, you know, certainly review the CIP what in our February or March meeting so that we can, we can have input into what goes into next, that budget for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay. So I'm gonna put down that we're gonna put this on hold until after the beginning of the year, does that work?
Well, I, I would disband it and just have the committee as a whole look at the CIP in total, come budget time.
Okay. That work for everybody? Okay. Okay. Researching offsite water storage possibilities, um, we disbanded this and talked about reforming it as needed after the CDP for the WRF is finalized, so that one's done until that point. I believe we're, um, expecting the CDP to move forward at the end of the year, so it'll be a little while. Uh, Ray, you had some ideas that, um, I think you wanted to bring forward in the future for water storage, is that something you want to talk about before the end of the year, or?
Uh, yeah, I'll talk about that at the end of the year, but you know, before the end of the year here, so.
Okay. Um, producing information, informational videos on water meter reading and other topics, we put that on, on hold due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, but we have a group, um, Megan and Melissa have been working quite well with the public on, um, information about water and how people can conserve water and doing the, um, I think she calls them audits of people's homes to help them, um, make sure that their uh, water serving devices are, are working properly, so do, does anybody feel like we really need to do instructional videos? No, okay. Okay, so it's not on hold, it's disbanded?
Yes.
Okay.
I lost my production crew anyways.
Yeah, I know. I hope, I hope he's doing well in Texas. Okay, um, water conservation and gray water use. I think we finished that one, that one's been disbanded. Urban Water Master Plan, that one's done as well. Water demand management and offset measures, um, I believe we completed that one as well. Needs and parameters for climate change, climate crisis policy, um, that's the one I was double checking on um, before the meeting to find out exactly what was expected to us, this was assigned to us um, from the board because the policy committee brought forward what they thought was a need for a climate change, climate crisis policy. So this committee at the moment is, uh, Michael and myself, and what we are supposed to be doing is looking to see what a policy committee, uh, what a policy on climate change and climate crisis should cover, what kind of things are needed to have a policy on, and then we're supposed to bring recommendations to the board, um, whether we want to have the R and I to design the policy or to refer it to the policy committee to design a policy. So this, this particular committee is active, and Michael and I, you need, you and I need to get together and start working on this. So that one's current. The brine waste. I'm sorry?
The volunteers.
Yeah, anybody else want to help with that? If the, the, um, ad hoc committee could include three people. Does anybody else want to work on that with, um, Michael and I?
I can do it if you need a third person.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna add you. Thank you. Okay. Brine waste.
Michael's a little busy right now, so.
Yeah, I know.
Passion on this one, though.
Yeah, I know you are.
Thank you, Dave.
Research brine waste disposal alternatives and zero liquid discharge with the R Utilities Manager D'Enzo, and that was, um, Steve, uh, Michael and Jim, where are we on that one?
I think, I think you have to ask Ray with, about that.
Ray?
Let, let's keep the, let's keep the committee, let's keep the ad hoc committee on that, I, I, I don't have, I don't have any updated information right now, but I will have some, something, uh, before the end of the year here, I think, so.
This is the eight hundred pound gorilla without a solution.
Yeah. Okay, water wastewater and WRF CIP prioritization. Let me see what the note on this is. I think this is pretty much the same committee we already talked about, isn't it? Prioritizing the CIP list?
Yeah, I think all of the CIP lists are, are, are good for now and need to be reviewed in February, March.
Okay, so this is on hold to bring back to the full R and I committee to talk about forming a new ad hoc, because I, I don't know who's gonna be on the R and I committee next year as far as being on ad hoc, so you all at some point before the end of the year have to decide if you're gonna stay on R and I, and if so, you're gonna have to put, fill out applications, um, for the board, so really don't want to appoint. Well, I don't know, anyway, let's put this on hold until after the first of the year. Okay, so we have, uh, one, two, two that are current, and two that are on hold until after the beginning of the year, so the needs and parameters for climate change, climate crisis policy is a current ad hoc, the brine waste is a current ad hoc, the CIP is on hold until after the beginning of the year. The asset management program is on hold for now, so does that sound correct to everybody?
So question on, on the CIP, um, there, there were two lines, so are you saying both that, uh, water wastewater WRF, CIP and the general fund are both on hold, is that?
I, I think we should put this on hold until we find out exact, first of all, the, the infrastructure ones need to be on hold till after the first of the year, but the other one needs to be on hold for the, um, general fund assets until, um, we know exactly what's expected to, of us, so why don't we just leave these on hold till after the first of the year, does that sound okay, Ray?
Oh yeah, sounds fine.
Okay. Thank you, um. Do you want to approve these revisions? Says approve or revise, so, um, maybe we should take a vote on it, I don't know. Anybody want to make a motion to agree to what we just discussed?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, second.
I'll second.
Okay. Let's do a roll call, because that's, we have to do it on Zoom. Jim?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Stephen? Michael?
Hi.
Brad?
Hi.
Okay. Five eyes. Okay, we have, um, item three B, review, discuss and consider recommending participation in the County of San Luis Obispo Regional Desalination Plan, do you want to introduce this item, Ray, this is your thing here?
Thank you. Thank you, Vice President Dean, so, um, the, uh, I'm, I'm sharing my screen at the moment, uh, because I, I have a, I do have a staff report for this, but I wanted to share some information regarding more background on this. So, the point of this, of this meeting right here is to, I, I, I would propose that we to recommend that the, that our, that, you know, our, our R and I committee would review, discuss and consider recommending participation in the County of San Luis Obispo Regional Desalination Plan, and, um, let me share this next slide here. So the idea of this is, um, the county wants to, uh, leverage all the stakeholders uh, within the area really to, to develop a, a long-term regional solution for water resiliency and, but looking specifically in as, with, with D cell as an option, and the, the county came up with this, this, this snappy acronym, it's called the desalination executable solution and logistics plan, doesn't quite roll off the tongue, but they didn't ask me, so, but it's, it's, uh, this is what's, they're, they're calling it a D cell plan. And there is a, a local, uh, working group called the County Water Action Committee, County Water Action Team, in which, uh, the, the, uh, the Cambria CSD was, was originally not a part of, only because, uh, they, they didn't think we were, um, the, we didn't have access to regional water, water sources, uh, meaning like, you know, we're not tied to any system like state water or, or even not cemental water, but we do have a, um, a water recycling, uh, water reclamation facility, which is a form of a D cell plant, but you know, we all know that it's not really a D cell plant, but it's really the same technology. So what the county is wanting to do here is they, they want to develop, they, they, they want to get a bunch of, um, of stakeholders, regional, uh, and right now there is no cost to participate in this, uh, in this plan, uh, but a resolution of commitment is needed, so, uh, if we do want to participate, then, you know, the board would need to, to adopt a resolution, and then there's a, uh, a sample resolution there in your, your agenda packet that, you know, that the county would propose that we would, we would, uh, write and adopt. So that's, that, that's one of the, the backgrounds here, and also, uh, uh, the county Board of Supervisors will be meeting to discuss this item specifically uh, in, on October eighteenth, uh, and really the, it's, it's anticipated that the board will, will adopt to move forward and give recommendation to, the, the Slow County Flood Control District, uh, to, to move forward with the plan, and that's going to be on, uh, on October eighteenth. Where does Cambria fit into this? Well, I believe, uh, that Cambria is, uh, in the forefront of this issue, because you know, we do have a, a WRF, and not only that, we also have, um, a pilot study that's pending, that would would introduce an, an opportunity, uh, we'll, 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 we'll introduce a new technology, perhaps to dispose of brine, which is really the, the, the big sticking point with, with a lot of, of these, uh, D cell plans, so, um, Cambria is in, in the, in a position to provide really good input to the county, would give us a good seat at the table, and, uh, the, the, the thing about this is that, once we, once these agencies, um, make a commitment to to participate in the program, and right now there's no costs, but there's going to be stages where, where, um, where, you know, they, they would require costs from the agencies, but there's opportunities to to bow out, let me share this next slide here with that. And, like I said, this is a long-term plan. Uh, most likely, we, you know, I, I intend to live a long life, but I might not see this, uh, coming to fruition, but just like it, like all of the, um, the, the goals that, that we personally have here with the district, you know, with utilities, is that that everything should be viewed long-term. Um, all of, all of our, all of our water supply should be viewed long-term, not just for us, you know, currently, but for posterity. Uh, so really, the idea here is that when we, when these phases get developed, you know, this is like the, the county's, um, uh, planned dates, so the, the years are the upper arrows there, so twenty to, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three is the agreement phase. This is where, uh, resolutions from the agencies to participate in the plan would be formed, uh, scope of work would actually be developed. Um, phase two is, you know, uh, from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-eight is a planned, is a planned development phase. This is when, um, all the agencies will seek to bring a consultant on board, begin the public engagement, uh, because there are a lot of biases involved with, with D cell, and also provide alternatives to the table, um, because, and you know, hopefully, a, at this point, an alternative, for example, such as a zero liquid discharge would be brought to the table, because it's definitely something that, that, um, that we haven't implemented, um, uh, industry-wide yet, so, but the fact that we can bring it here to this area as, as an alternative would be something that we could contribute to the group. And then, uh, phase three and four is the actual project development phase, and, and if, if those want to uh, agree to be a part of the, the actual project, uh, part of phases three and four is, uh, from twenty twenty-nine to twenty forty, and then phase five is the actual governance agreement and the construction phase, so basically like anyone who does participate in, and who's going to receive the water, how, who's going to run it, all of that will, will take place uh, on, in phase five. So there are opportunities to, to be a part of it right now, um, and that's what I encourage us to to be a part of, because like I said, we do have something that we can offer to, to the stakeholders, uh, even though there is, there's a good possibility, we might not participate, you know, in the end, but, but at the same time, but the, the fact that we can bring something to the table to help develop a, a sustainable, environmentally friendly plan, I think would be, would be beneficial to the county as a whole, uh, and, and it could give options to, to the district in the future, you know, um, what I'm hoping from this that I want to bring to the table as, as representing the district is I, I would want the, all the stakeholders to consider other options that, that is your standard high-energy usage and, and, uh, and ocean outfall, uh, solution, that's, 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 you know, uh, what's, what's part of, uh, D cell in, uh, all over the world at the moment. Uh, you know, there's, could, because there's possibly other research opportunities that I've, that I actually, I'm, I'm aware of, and actually that I'm not aware of that could exist out there that hasn't been developed yet. So I'm hoping that, that these things get brought to, to the forefront, and that's what I'm hoping that our participation would would foster, would, 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 would put us a seat at the table, uh, for this, and not just have, uh, the Cambria CSD be, you know, out here all by ourselves, but we are part of a regional solution for water sustainability and resiliency. So my recommendation is that, that your committee, that, that we would recommend that the board consider participation in the county D cell plan, and, um, and like I mentioned, And like I mentioned, I. There, there will be a county board meeting on October 18th. So more information is going to, more specifics will come to light before the anticipated. Should, should we, you know, recommend this to the board? I anticipate that a board agenda would be in, in December 2022. For us to participate. So that is my presentation. So if you all have any questions, I'm, I'm available.
So you said to, to start off with that this isn't going to cost the district any money. At what point would it begin to cost the district money?
It's probably not going to cost anybody any money until, until a project is chosen. And that's probably. I anticipate that's not going to happen until phase three. So it's, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be a while since. For that to happen.
Okay. So you mentioned a consultant in phase two. Does that mean us hiring a consultant? What, what are you meaning by consultant?
I, I think what's going to happen is the, the. Okay. So now, again, I, until, until the board, you know, acts on it. What I, what I think is going to happen is that the consultant will be, will be paid for by the, the Slow County Flood Control District. And that's the, the direction that, that the board is going to give the Flood Control District. Really, really relating to the, the consultant inside of the alternatives solutions.
Okay. Brad has his hand up. Do you have some questions, Brad?
Yeah, as I was reading through it, in reference to the desalinization part of the project or that, that alternative, that's non-potable then? Is that, Ray, is that what they're looking at?
Uh, well. There, there are potable versions. I mean, are you talking about like where, what, what the source of the D-SAL would?
Well, yeah, I mean, the original concept that I read about is 900,000 from the water district to get a consultant to go over the SCE or the Edison. Diablo area. And that would be non-potable.
Oh, yeah. So. That, you know, so the, the temptation here is to start, you know. Giving details like that about like, is it going to be the Diablo Canyon D-SAL plan? You know, this is not necessarily that. This is, because the. You know, that, that, that right now is, it's going down a path. It's going to be, it could be considered as part of this D-SAL plan, but. But I don't think it's, it, it should be a given that that's going to be the solution for this, this effort. That was just a question. Yeah.
Michael, are you? There you are.
Um. But before I speak, what, what was your plan on public comment versus board comment?
I was asking you guys for questions for clarification, and then I'm going to take public comment, and then we're going to bring Ray back for further discussion.
So I wanted to comment about the, the no cost. No cost financially. One of my concerns is that Ray is a very busy man. Ray's. Participation, the, the. The positive I felt from the community when the word came out that Ray was going to be a project manager for the skate park development. You know, huge positive receptivity to that. Big project. The, getting the, getting the CDP, having really laser focus on getting to that point and so many other factors. You know, the. Major industry groups. I mean, this is a, this is going to be a collaborative effort and the, the effort could be more than we think and it will, will consume Ray's time. Now. So what's the? That, that's one of the downsides. What are the benefits to? You know, the Cambria community for really contributing Ray's expertise and time. That I see relatively low probability of. Cambria to direct benefit in terms of whatever solution might come out of, of the, the study in several decades. Wherever some plant might be placed, it's going to be a long way from Cambria and the cost of a pipeline. We, I think we all know that there's no way we would be piping that water here. The, also the probability of coastal commission approving, I mean, we've seen. Let's just say, no one's seen a spirit of open arms for D-SAL, D-SAL projects. Also, the. Sort of. Negative vibe within the community of. All right, Ray is spending time working on this D-SAL project doesn't. I don't think contributes to the, the positive spirit here in, here in this little town. Also, the concept of, you know, we're in the forefront of, of the. Of the technology. I mean, we do have, we do have the advanced water treatment plant. And there's, there's not too many others like it. But then there are other ways to contribute, whatever expertise we do have. Ad hoc or as an interview to the, the group rather as that would not necessitate raise. Kind of full involvement in the proceedings. And, and also raise objectives. You're, I, I really align with the objectives you state to. Encourage the group to work towards sustainable solutions that will benefit, you know, many future generations. And I admire that and I, and I know you're sincere. I have the feeling that most of the participants will have that same spirit in, in this county. Not many will not be bringing that. So. Those are the, just the things that come top of mind when I think about investing your precious time in, in this.
Okay. Jim, do you have questions for clarification?
Um. I don't know. I think I, I maybe have a comment or something that.
Go ahead, make your comment, and then I'm going to bring Elizabeth in.
Well, I guess I remember a meeting with Bruce Gibson and we asked him about the potential for regional. Not regional D-SAL, but regional wastewater treatment. Offering a, a potential new source of water to, to San Luis Obispo County. And, and he cited back to us the lack of enthusiasm that San Simeon had for it at the time. And which went back and forth a couple of times in the subsequent years. And so. Personally, you know, I'm very concerned about the condition of these creeks locally. And their ability to sustain the ecosystems that have developed around them. And so I tend to be in favor of projects that will lessen the dependency on rainfall, creek water. And the, the kinds of problems that that can incur. So that was my comment.
Okay. Okay. Okay, Brad. And I need, I do need to let Dr. Benton.
Just to summarize what Michael was talking about. That was going to be my second part of my question was. I would just be concerned about the amount of time Ray's commitment would take in, in that endeavor, but it seems like a worthy endeavor.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Bentonhausen, I know you've been waiting to speak. Go ahead.
Well, in my 80 years, I've developed increasing patience, if you can believe that, which is semi-true probably. I would like you to look, please, at the first page in your agenda for today because my questions, I will focus on that. I don't know exactly what the page number is though, but the first page of 3B, please, for today. My first question is regarding the third sentence of the discussion. The purpose is to leverage various community stakeholders to address regional problem of water. Now, I read some of the background material for this D-SAL plan from the county. And Paso Robles and Robles and Atascudera are very explicit. They are not interested in this. San Simeon is completely absent from the, the recorded discussions anyhow of this document. The five cities are somewhat reluctant because they've got their own plan going. So I'm very curious who the state potential stakeholders might be. And I think that a key word here is in the county documents. They point to the fact that D-SAL is an ocean project fairly early on. In other words, it's ocean-bound communities that they suspect might be stakeholders. And I think that's a particular bias that sets in already in a slow county discussion. My second question about that sentence is what does leverage mean? When the county is going to leverage some stakeholder? I don't know exactly what that means. My third point then is the last sentence of that paragraph. Like the Water Regional Management Group, of which the district is a member. Agencies wishing to participate in the working group will execute a memorandum of understanding, which I assume is very different from the potential resolution before you today. That would come somewhere down the, the annual road. And adopt or approve of the plan. This sentence makes it sound like there's no option for saying no to the plan. So you could participate for five years and your option is to adopt or approve, but not, not to say this plan is inadequate. My next point is number four, and I'd like to go to the next. Paragraph, please. I, I think the pilot project for zero liquid brine discharge could be really quite exciting. Every time I ask for more specifics about it, I get, oh, it's imminent. The, the permit to set up, et cetera, et cetera. But I'm sure that this could be a very interesting, but the problem is. Let, let me give you a quick example. The other day I, I was walking the beach and there were dozens of salp that had washed in. That's spelled S-A-L-P. They are ocean creatures that are transparent, just marvelous creatures. I took them to the grammar school where I volunteer and showed first and second graders. They couldn't believe it. Are they related to jellies? No, et cetera. But I told them what salp can do. And several years ago, 2016, I believe, the salp blocked the entire ocean intake at Diablo Canyon D-SAL plant. They had to turn the entire D-SAL plant off because the salp, flexible gelatin-like creatures that they are, blocked the entire screen. Now, I don't know. I think salp have wised up and said, oh, you humans go do your thing. We'll stay away. I hope. But my point is, there's nothing in the description here about the ocean intake as part of the issue of environmental concerns. And I would put that in big caps, bold-faced and large font size were I to describe what's being asked here directly. I think the technology of WRF, as it's now called, would perhaps be quite pertinent in a way to a, to a D-SAL plant put in in 1945, in 2045. But I think that there is little conversation so far in any of the Slow County documents or here in this discussion of the potential environmental effects of this kind of technology. And I really, I'm becoming less patient. Maybe my mortality is, the proximity of it is setting in and my patience is now declining, but I've become much less patient, waiting for the in-stream flow study and all the attendant components of it for San Simeon Creek. I monitor the lower reaches of Santa Rosa Creek every day if I am up to it. And I can tell you there is variability beyond your belief or mine for that matter. So I think that the environmental effects, even of the study. Well, let me put it differently. The, in the components of the study that would look at environmental effects are crucial. They have to be named explicitly and clearly. And maybe that's a reason for CCSD to participate. Although I must say, with no offense, that holds to Mr. D'Enzo, because in many ways, Mr. D'Enzo, you're still trying to catch up with what in the world is CCSD about in some ways. But the, the CCSD very rarely explicitly defines environmental components and the significance of the environmental effects of new technology. We give an illusion of having done that, but I think it is pathetically inadequate so far. Not only on San Simeon Creek, but Santa Rosa Creek as well. It could well be that Diablo, Diablo Canyon is not discussed in the county documents as a potential option here. There's a D-SAL down there. But what, what has been done here is the Army Corps of Engineers have checked out Santa Rosa Creek Beach for the location of an intake from the ocean. And I was there taking photos beyond belief, et cetera, years ago. And many of you were when that happened. And we're still debating who's going to pay for what on some of that. But I want to point out to you at the beginning, you make a decision now. And if you sign this referendum, there are problems. I won't take up your time reciting the problems in that wording that you've got before you today. But I want to say that it is possible that you're committing yourself to investigate the potential sighting. Potential sighting of a desalination plant down here off Shammel Park. And that wouldn't be a novelty in the encounters that CCSD has had over the past two decades anyhow. So I thank you very much for allowing me to take this much time. I didn't get this document until lunch today. So I'm, I'm sorry if my reading has been cursory and inaccurate. Just let me know and I'd be very glad really to think about it and correct it more. I wish Mr. D'Enzo a lot of luck because people pointing out that this man is overworked. I refer to you third person. That you are overworked, Mr. D'Enzo, do not yet know how to move into complete accuracy. So Mr. D'Enzo is not overworked. He is overworked. And there's something wrong with the management of the district, but you know me, I won't burden you with my analysis of that today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Bentonhausen. You are the only member of public attending, so I figured I might as well let you take the amount of time you needed. Thank you for your input. David?
This is a very good discussion. I, I agree with Michael's commentary on Mr. D'Enzo's time and also his commentary on the fact that we don't know what technologies are going to lead to, et cetera. I think our participation, whether it's. Mr. D'Enzo's time or, or, or somebody else on staff to go to these meetings will be, you know, minimal to up to them, but at least they can keep track of things. The. The humankind is looking for new technologies for water. And being on this group, I think is going to be a good idea to stay abreast of all of those possibilities because I don't think this is going to end up centered on desalinated, desalinization plants. I think it might be more on reuse, recycle in the end, because I think that technology is moving along rapidly. We, we also need to consider the fact that yes, we do have two streams. Yes, we do have a water reclaim facility, but do we know that those things are going to be able to sustain the people that are living in our community now? Or are we going to need more water source at some point? And where is that technology going to be discussed? Probably on this committee. Last, the WRF is, hasn't run much, okay, but eventually at some point, the WRF, maybe in the.
hasn't run much, okay, but eventually, at some point, the W R F, maybe in the twenty forty four, twenty forty five timeframe is going to be out of its life cycle, and we will either need to be, you know, renewing it, or at that point, hopefully putting something in there that has new technology that Mr. Denzel has learned about by being on this on this committee. So, uh, I I support he or someone on his staff attending these meetings on a regular basis just to keep us abreast, if nothing else, of of what's going on and what that opportunities are.
Thank you. Stephen, you're the only one we haven't heard from yet on this. Do you have some things to say, please?
Well, I kind of see both sides of it. I mean, I don't know that anything that they come up with is ever going to help our community, because we're so far away, and it'd be very expensive for a pipeline or anything like that, but I believe we should participate just to get more information for things that could help us in the future.
Okay, Ray.
Okay, thank, thank you, Vice President Dean. So, um, to answer the question about, am I being overworked for this? I but this is, by by the way, something I'm very passionate about, not specifically D cell. But I am very passionate about um, about opportunities for um for water, for 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 a robust water portfolio for the district. This is something that I one of the reasons why I I took this job, I wanted to to be a part of the solution for the community, and I and and not only and and I don't want to bring biases into into this effort. You know, Dr. Bentonhausen talked about, you know, renewing all of the the problems of D cell in the past, you know, the intake, the ocean outfall, all of these things that that have been problems with uh with the with the D cell technology that we know of of currently. So so when when I say, you know, yeah, I am, I am very passionate about developing a water portfolio for the county, I'm not not at the expense of of harming the environment. I we we all enjoy, we're all, I believe, uh, the same, uh, have the same uh commitment to to living here and 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 enjoying the the environmental resources that we have, and we want to keep it that way. So that's definitely something I'm I'm very passionate about and um and, you know, as far as the 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 commitment, time commitment, it will be like what Mr. Pearson said, it just it'll be attending these meetings as they come, it's most likely it might be once a month, it it might be, you know, typically, the the County Water Action Team meets like quarterly. So, um, and sometimes once a month, you know, depending on the need. So that would be the 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 that would be the time commitment, but it's, you know, it's these kind of things are are part of, you know, why I'm here. I I wanna, I wanna be part of the solution and in developing a robust water portfolio for for the district. And something that that uh that Mr. Pearson said that I want to to reiterate here, that any time there is an effort to to move forward into innovation, to move forward into researching other technologies, there's always technologies that are offshoots of that, that, you know what, that could be a a viable solution here, not exactly D cell, but it's like a, what 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 we're also, we're we're also um uh, not considering in this discussion at the moment is that regulations can change even regarding direct potable reuse, for example. There are, there are open avenues for that when you're, when you're pursuing uh technology, pursuing innovation. There's these other offshoots that we could, we could all benefit from that are not exactly the the necessarily the main point of the the original path, but it's something that could be useful here for us uh in in Cambria. So, so all of these things, you know, it's it's something that I I I I think that we're all of the of the same, you know, agreement as far as what we want for for the district, you know, we we want, we want water supplies that are resilient and environmentally friendly. Um, you know, you know, not not at the, not at the cost of of harming the environment. We we want all of that here, so. Uh, and and as far as um, the question about will we have an opportunity to to decline at a future time? Yes, there's there's different, there's many off-ramp opportun- possibilities, you know, that was one of the things that was brought up at the scoping meeting for this was that, you know, there are opportunity, there there's there's an opportunity to participate at at the beginning, and if we decide it's not for us a week later, years later, whatever, it's uh then we can, we can bow out, so. And and if it's moving in a direction that we don't want, we can bow out. So, um, those are that, you know, that that's a concern that that I think that can be um, can be assuaged at the moment. We 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 do have the opportunity to bow. So, yeah, those are my comments.
Okay, so this exhibit A, the resolution, that's not, that's something that eventually will go before the board, correct?
That's a, that's an example. We'll we'll tailor it, you know, as far as, you know, what's considered a memorandum of understanding, every, every agency, every council has their own method of of having their board or council. Have, you know, when when whenever they want to make a form, a formal commitment to be involved with something, there's, there's different methods of doing it. For us, it is a resolution. Uh, this would be an example of what a resolution would look like, so.
Okay, so exactly what is it you you would like, are expecting us or wanting us to do at this meeting? David?
Yeah, I I can make a motion, I think. Um, I'll I'll make a motion that we recommend to the full board uh, that they pass a resolution uh committing us at this point to participation in the D cell project uh as as it currently stands. Good enough, Ray?
Yes, that's, that's.
Okay, do we have a second? Michael, did you want to speak or you have a second? You're muted. You're muted. Michael, you're muted. We couldn't hear you.
The mouse wouldn't work. I had to press all day. So I I I'll I will second Dave's motion. Truly based on Ray's passion in this field, his uh, his desire for really being part of the uh, the the pack of front runners that are researching this to be you know, as a small portion of his time truly is professional development. I think it's something that Ray was bashing about. So on that basis, I'm gonna second this.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Dave?
Hi.
Hey, Michael?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Brad?
Hi.
Stephen? Okay, that's unanimous, so we will go ahead and recommend to the full board. Do you want to repeat your mo- can you repeat your full motion again, David? I'll get it off the recording.
Okay.
I'll get it off the recording. Okay, uh, let's see, I got my papers scrambled here, just a second, let me get my agenda back up. Okay, so future agenda items, is there anything? David?
Well, first off, um, the next meeting is scheduled for, I believe, the eleventh of October. And due to the fact that we're meeting today, and do we need a meeting in October, or should we delay until November? And if we delay until November, I think that would be an opportunity for um, Ray to once again update us on uh, the in-stream flow study and and all of the stuff having to do with the C D P and and moving that along. And he would also have an update, hopefully, on on this zero discharge, uh, whether that's been approved or not, so. I, you know, I I'm I'm kind of recommending that we just, you know, wait until November, but.
Okay, I kind of tend to agree. Ray, you're gonna be out of town anyway on the eleventh, aren't you?
Yes, I won't be here in town.
Okay, so therefore Ray's not gonna have anything, he's going to be working with us on the eleventh, so. Um, let's see, I think we can, should we take a vote on going ahead and? Well, actually, it's up to David and I, I think, as the chair and vice chair, whether or not we have the meeting, so I, but I agree, I think we should postpone till November. Unless anybody has objections and has something they desperately want to discuss on October eleventh.
Yeah, Ray, you don't have anything that we need to do in October, do you?
No, I don't.
Okay, okay, so we'll we'll go ahead and do that, but anything else on a future agenda than looking towards November? Besides the things that David listed. No? Okay. Okay, if that's it, if no one has any objections, it is three oh two, and we can go ahead and adjourn the meeting unless somebody wants to hang on. For some reason, thank you.
Brad's waving goodbye.
Okay. Thank you.